Starting the stream.
Can we fix the audio? Is it two hours of straight video with no sound?
I tried watching it last night.
You guys need to do black and white with the sign overlays, right? So when you're talking, so we get the... I object. Yeah.
Yeah.
Someone took the 1989 Batman film and made it black and white with no sound. And like, cut to like, so like, they would, he'd say, you know, you know, "Meet me at the top for five minutes." And, and then looked at, and then the screen thing would be, "Better make it 10." Just the words, right? Like they did the old, you know, old silent movies. It was fantastic. I just seen pieces of it. I need to see, but yeah, someone cut it out that way. There we go.
All right, it's seven o'clock. We'll call this Rager City Council meeting in order. Please join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, clerk, please call the rule.
Alderwoman Hatterline.
President Schultz.
Here.
Lavelle.
Here.
Karen Cross.
Here.
Lancaster.
Here.
Gorman.
Here.
Perkins.
President.
Luna. Gorman is present.
Clerk, at this time, we'll open the floor for public comment for any item that's not on the agenda. If you have questions or comments about an item on the agenda, please make it known at that time and we will recognize you. Any takers? Hearing none or seeing none, we'll move on to item number four. Item number four is the Administration Committee meeting minutes from February 24th and March 13th, 2024. The committee's action is sought to approve the minutes as presented.
Make a motion to approve the Administration Committee minutes.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Hatterline, second by Perkins. How much questions? Clerk, call a roll.
Alderwoman Hatterline.
Yes.
Karen Cross.
Yes.
Gorman.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you for the Transportation Committee meeting minutes of March 6th, 2024. The committee's actions requested to approve the minutes as presented. Make a- Motion to approve.
Second.
Pushed by Lavelle, second by Schultz. Any comments or questions? Clerk, call a roll.
Chairman Schultz.
Yes.
Lavelle.
Yes.
Gorman.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number six is the consent agenda, six A through six L. Is there any item on the consent agenda City Council wishes to remove from the consent agenda? You're not allowed to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll second.
Pushed by Hatterline, second by Gorman. Comments or questions here? Hearing none, clerk, call a roll.
Alderman Lavelle.
Yes.
Karen Cross.
Yes.
Lancaster.
Yes.
Gorman.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Hatterline.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven is dispensed with since there is no item removed from the consent agenda. Item number eight is a payment of the bills. Your actions requested to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of $392,189.41.
Make a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
I have a motion by Hatterline, second by Schultz to pay the bills. Comments or questions here? Hearing none, clerk, call a roll.
Alderwoman Lancaster.
Yes.
Gorman.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Hatterline.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lavelle.
Yes.
Karen Cross.
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number nine is GW Properties submitted a request. They submitted a request for the removal of required sidewalks as part of their project located at 5508 U.S. 14 Division Street. Your actions request to approve or deny the request. Is a party here present? Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yep, Brian Rosenbloom, 2211 North Elston, Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner?
Are you the property owner?
I am owner representative.
Right, okay.
So, thank you for having me here tonight. My request is rather simple. As we are gearing up to submit for our permits for this project, the one last item that came up with our tenant Starbucks, as well as ourselves, is the request for sidewalks on both Route 14 and Maguire Road. Through various reviews with both of our civil engineer, as well as our tenant, we feel that these sidewalks are unneeded due to the lack of connectivity anywhere in this intersection, both on our side of the street and across. In addition, our tenant feels that it will create safety concerns due to the lack of connectivity. The safety concerns stem from pedestrians not having in place access to the property that's currently there. So, they feel that having these sidewalks removed will help increase the safety that they're trying to acquire for this property and project.
Make a motion to deny. I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second by Perkins and Gorman to deny the request. Is there any comments or questions here?
I have some questions for, I guess, for city staff. So, I understand the petitioner's issue with regards to there not being other sidewalks. I know this is an issue along 14 that we're trying to address over time. And, I guess, where are the, where are the nearest sidewalks to that location? And what are, what do we anticipate in terms of additional business development and additional sidewalks being put in, in that area? I'm not sure who's the-
The nearest sidewalk adjacent to that area would be at Culvers, just to the south. That's, that's the closest adjacent sidewalk. This is also in the project area where McHenry County Department of Transportation proposes the pedestrian walkway or the multi-use path that extends from-
Rush Creek to-
Rush Creek to Shadow Creek. So, there, there are near plans to start connecting those areas.
Rob, do we have a timeline on when that would happen, though? That's probably five years out, right?
It, it could be five years out. Right now, the problem with the county is staffing. They have the money, they have the, the resources to do it. However, they need somebody to lead the project and, and/or some, some squeaky wheels.
Well, is, is it possible to require some sort of bond or some other security so that at such time as it makes sense to connect sidewalks to, to do that?
Yes, what Brian and I had discussed is another option is to defer the sidewalks for a reasonable amount of time. Whether it be one year, two years for this side, three years for this side, what have you, which they seemed agreeable to, and then hold something in reserve until those sidewalks are completed. On the other side, because this was asked previously before this meeting, Dunkin' Donuts, Gary, our city engineer, did not require the sidewalk at this time because of the grant that the city had received that goes from 173 to Airport Road, I believe, along that side. So although there's no sidewalks currently, as you all know, the city does anticipate adding all these sidewalks in the near future.
So, with my motion to deny, the reason why I made that motion was I was the person to talk to Donovan about Dunkin' Donuts because I know they didn't put it, so I couldn't remember. So I didn't, not see in that, the only variance I remember with Dunkin' Donuts was the bailout lane that we had an issue with. So that was my fault for overseeing the sidewalk thing. But McDonald's, Culvers, the bank, all had to require to put sidewalks in, and there's nothing touching those. And what we, before we became a city council, the people before us wanted to do that with new developments so we can start doing it. Especially with what we're thinking about doing in admin in next month or two with the whole proposal with the residents. If we deny, we let businesses not do sidewalks, how can we do this program with the residents?
I do just want to note that, other than just interconnecting sidewalks, there's also no infrastructure at this intersection.
Understand, but you're putting an infrastructure up.
I'm, I'm talking crosswalks, signals.
Understand, but also, when you said it's going to be for the safety of you guys, honestly, it's less safe because there's no sidewalks there because people will be walking on 14 or Maguire Road without getting hit.
But back to my point, there's no connecting sidewalks to-
There could be, but, so we're trying to do this- So we're trying to do this to get sidewalks in all the places. Unfortunately, many years before we were even on this board, city council, that happened. That's why you don't see sidewalks. But all the new developments there, you see sidewalks now.
So, to Donovan's point, we're happy to defer it if the city is requiring this. Again, we feel and our tenant feels that it's a safety issue. And it's as simple as that.
Matt, would you be comfortable amending your motion instead of deny to, to maybe defer it?
For, for how long? I'm just afraid if Starbucks comes in and they go out of business and-
Well, I mean, Donovan said like one or two years. I mean, if they're willing to do a year or two, I mean, they're-
I don't think that's enough time. One or two years is not enough time. It takes us, it takes us three, four years just to get stuff going, it seems like. I would go five years.
I mean, I can tell you this much, if Starbucks is going in there, they're not looking at being out in a year or two.
They also have a 15-year lease, so.
I, I think we're forgetting about the original intent of the ordinance.
No, I, I'm, I'm just asking if they're, if you got, if it's something that you'd be willing to, to be flexible on. I'm not saying I'm for or against at this point. I'm just trying to figure out if that's something, if you're totally against it, that's fine. But I, I just wanted to see where you guys are at.
I wouldn't rescind my second, so.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just concerned about that. I know, yeah, Starbucks is supposed to, but they're supposed to go in over a year ago, just like Dunkin' Donuts was supposed to go over a year ago. And Dunkin' Donuts is still sitting there trying to be under construction. It's the longest construction I've seen on a fast food place.
I, I, I see both sides of it. So, I mean, I, I get it. I mean, it's a lot of money that they don't want to put down right now, and I get it. But I, I agree with you. I think there's a reason, there's a reason why we required that.
One thing we could look at separate from this is to mitigate the termination points. In other words, there might be some way to make them so they just don't abruptly end, that they actually take you back to where you would have been if there wasn't a sidewalk there, for example. And do, you know, and that, that doesn't, wouldn't even necessarily have to be a permanent pavement to do that. Because there's nothing else that's permanent there, you know, at this, right now. So this is something that perhaps the Transportation Committee could look at after the, after the fact, to make it less. You know, I can understand the, the claim that there's a certain amount of unsafety. I went over and looked at that area and there's a trench there, you know, a deep ditch on Maguire. And to get back to the, to the road, you would have to go down in that to get out. So if you did use a sidewalk, there, there is an issue there. And perhaps you could do something, though, like maybe put a culvert there and then a walkway back to the road to where you would have been. And then it would actually be safer. You know, it's something we could, we could, we could look at and then take it out once the connection, connection is made. But we have to stick to this. We have to stay with what we put, put in, or the next guy will say exactly the same thing. Well, he doesn't have one, I'm not, I don't want to put one in. The whole idea of this was to get the, the developers to help us develop that area of the city with, with new infrastructure, including pedestrian infrastructure. That was it. And I don't see any reason to deviate from that.
Donovan, do we have an estimate on the cost of the sidewalks, both sides?
Yeah, the estimate's in, right around a hundred grand.
Okay. How are we dealing with the fact that there is a, a light at that one intersection? How does that sidewalk work around that? Do we have design of what that would be like?
This is all subject to IDOT approval.
Yeah.
So my concern is, is that if we do something that maybe temporarily or does not enter into the curb line, and we submit something, or they submit something to IDOT, IDOT's going to throw it back and say, "No, you're touching it right away. We need the ingress and egress down to the curb line into 14 Maguire Road," what have you. Department of Transportation for the county, same thing. So, perhaps we get some of these answers and bring it back to Transportation Committee?
Yeah, because I think this isn't, I mean, honestly, Charlie, I agree with you 100%. But this isn't Culvers. This is at an intersection that has nothing and that we know is in what, within five years, is, there might be something done. But how do you deal with that intersection? How do you deal with the sidewalk there? Do you just not say, "Okay, put in, don't do the last 15 feet, do the rest of it"? You know what I'm saying? The 15 feet coming into the entrance? Because in the end, you know, IDOT's going to have the decision on how that's done. And that could delay this project. And I'm, and I'm not trying to, I'm simply saying maybe we put that on hold for this, at, just for now. Require some type of bond or whatever you want to do, and then figure out how this can be done. I, I, I think they should, I think this property owner should be required to do it. I'm just not sure if right now is the right time because we don't know exactly how it's going to be done. This could delay the project. I don't know how, how long. I mean, we, we know how long, we know how long that they messed around with, with the county on the in and out, the ride in, ride out on, on Maguire Road. And that went around for quite a while. So, you know, again, I'm, again, my opinion, the property owner should, if not doing it, at least put a bond down on it for now until it can, can be reasonably done. Because we don't know what the requirements are for that intersection. Donovan, I, I want to get your opinion on that.
I, I just want to say we're, we, we are happy to do that. We're happy to put a bond up considering, as stated, there's just no plans in place currently. And again, it is a safety issue for us to install sidewalks when there's no interconnection or signals.
Well, I mean, it, I'm not, we're, I don't think, I honestly see people walking, I run the Business Cross Street bowling alley. I see people walking down that road, or walking in the grass all the time down that road going into Walmart. And they'll, you know, and unfortunately, you know, this policy wasn't in place when Walmart was built because then we would just be able to connect your sidewalk with Walmarts, but it's not there. So I don't know how we ever get Walmart to do that freely for us.
Could end it just like McDonald's ends theirs at a point, Culvers ends theirs at a point.
But where do you begin it? That's my, that's my question. And we, we don't know where it begins at this point.
Beginning in what, the property?
No.
Beginning of the sidewalk.
At the beginning of the sidewalk. Where do we begin that at the inters-
Talking about the intersection part. From 14 to Maguire.
Correct.
Unfortunately, they gotta go through any, like any, any development or they have to go through IDOT. And then they get the approval to get all that stuff done.
So do we make that a priority?
I can tell you right now, if we're going to be required to do signal work, it, it's, this is dead. We are happy to do a bond and work with you guys.
We certainly don't, my opinion would not be, would be that this developer is not responsible for the intersection, you know, access for, for, for pedestrians. That is an IDOT, that is a county issue. They would only be providing it to a certain point where the county and IDOT would finish it. Does that, does that make sense? But where, what is that point, is what I'm saying.
I, can I, okay, so, just so that I understand, like, how this construction project would go with, with these sidewalks. If we were to deny this, and you've got to put the sidewalks in, et cetera, IDOT has to review all of this. And if they, if IDOT comes in and says, "No, you're not doing this. It's in our, it's in our jurisdiction, it's our right of way." And again, I'm covering this so that people understand the layman's terms of it. That would, that part of it, is that a separate part of this building permit? Or is that all contingent on the full building permit? Because if IDOT says you can't put the sidewalks in, and this holds up the entire building permit, and it's not its own little section of it, are we now-
It's, they're together.
Okay. So, just so everybody's on the same page. If we were to deny this, and they have to put in the sidewalks, and with our good intent, and what we're saying is we want them to put the sidewalks in, and IDOT comes in and says, "Kibosh, you're not touching these sidewalks. You're not putting this in until we say so." This entire project gets put on hold because, and we're waiting for IDOT. In which case, and I'm not speaking for anybody, but if I was in their position, I would seriously consider walking away from the project entirely because it could be several years before they even negotiate.
That, Dan.
I, I'm, I'm just, just so everybody understands where we're at.
When this started in, what, a year, year and a half ago? When we approved that they can come in there and Popeyes backed out, but Starbucks? Where was that process for the, your owners and everything? Where was that process to working with every government?
That was a completely different project. It was a much more intense project with two users, two drive-throughs. Maguire, MDOT was requiring a turn lane. It was a completely different project, different intensity.
Did it have sidewalks?
Uh, that project did have sidewalks, considering we were doing right-of-way work with adding a turn lane on both Maguire and redoing the work on Route 14. Excuse me.
Did I not approve the sidewalks for that?
We didn't get to that point. So, so-
You had a plan.
The project died at that point.
You had a plan for that, to submit to them.
That's correct. The plans were completed, but the tenant pulled out at that point.
So, so, just, just so that we clarify here, okay? If, if we were to deny this, and they have to keep the sidewalks, while the intent is good, I'm not saying that the intention is bad. And I'm not saying that, that one way or the other is the right way to go. We have our reasons for this. But every time IDOT denies these projects to move forward because there's issues or they delay because the, for their, you know, their property, their right-of-way connecting to, to, to what they've got.
I just want to add, without sidewalks, this project alone is six months review with IDOT. Include it, if we, if we include the-
No, I understand. I know the process of all that, how long it takes. I know IDOT takes forever.
I was just adding to his-
It's the state of Illinois. I know how they do it.
But let me get to my point here.
Okay.
We, I understand why we're doing this, and I understand that we're careful with precedent. I'm just laying it out so everybody understands. Ev, for each time a project comes in here and a developer wants to build this, and, and, and they get hosed by, by being held up by IDOT for however long.
What happens when you do business on 14, it's IDOT.
I, I get that, but are we willing to allow 14 to go undeveloped for a decade because we've got businesses that keep getting shot down?
It's a hell of a statement.
But, well, I'm just saying, if, if we're, look at what the issues we've had with IDOT with just the overpass and all the other stuff that, that it takes them years to get things in order. It's a, it's a struggle to deal with that.
Well, good thing we do have people in Congressmen and stuff we can talk to and push it. They've been around recently.
I'm, I'm just laying out there from a development standpoint. I'm not arguing against you, and I'm not saying that I'm for or against in this moment. I just want to make sure everybody understands that if, if we have some of these requirements and we stick to it, the consequences can be that we risk losing development for a long period of time down this corridor because we're, of these issues, you know, if we're willing to, to work with them on the bond, that can kind of make things a little bit easier to work with them. Again, I'm just laying out there's consequences. Business, this, the reputation of, of development gets around. If developers are having a lot of difficulty in an area getting stuff through, they, that gets around. And then they may or may not decide to, to additionally come here. Just, just saying that, that, that's something to keep in mind when we're having some of these requirements in there. I get why we do it, and I agree that there's a good reason why we do it, and I like that we do it. But we have to be willing to accept those consequences if we have issues going forward with development on these projects. Because every time a project gets killed, people know that, they keep track of that.
Donovan, you might be able to correct me on this. But didn't we already work with the original plan where it was going to be at Popeyes as well, that they required a turn lane? But we worked with, I believe it was the county, that the turn lane was no longer required?
That's correct.
That sounds right. Yeah.
Yes.
So, that being said, it's not, not that we haven't exerted some sort of influence to help on situations with this, or like this. If, if you do, depending on how the vote goes, if you do decide to kick this back over to the Transportation Committee and go the other route, which is to require a bond, my, my one suggestion would be to, to put a, you know, a three- or a five-year cap with a growth on it because expenses only continue to go up.
Yeah.
Well, there's a motion and a second.
Yeah, is there any more comments or questions? We have a motion to deny the request as submitted. Hearing none, clerk, call a roll.
Alderman Gorman.
No. Yes, yes.
Yeah, to be clear, if you vote yes, you're denying the request.
Got it, yeah.
Alderman Perkins.
Yes.
Alderwoman Hatterline.
No.
Schultz?
No.
Lavelle?
Yes.
Karen Cross?
No.
Lancaster?
No.
Motion to deny fails.
No, I would like to-
No, 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 no. Four, three.
Yeah, it failed. I would like to make a motion that we send this to Transportation Committee. We need to have a three-to-five-year bond, or we need to have a three-to-five-year timeline. We need to have some type of bond in play that, so I need, I need an idea of how the motion should be.
So, your motion would be to send this back to Transportation Committee to discuss an option of requiring a three-to-five-year bond with a growth attached to it.
I, I make that motion. Thank you, Lou.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second by Schultz and Lancaster to send the issue to the Transportation Committee. Any comments or questions?
I just want to say that I, I, I think this is a good decision because I, I feel that, and it, denial may be in order, but I feel that the denial at this moment is a little rash. I, I really like to see more, more discussion on options to see what, what other way that there is to accomplish this without it causing issues.
So, my quick thing, sorry, if this was going to be a thing to go back to bond, why didn't this be brought to Transportation first? And here, because this is the first time we did come up with this. If there was a working thing, maybe we should start at Transportation before we went to the full City Council and worked something out.
So it was a timing issue to try to keep the project moving forward. If, if it was denied, or if it was approved, if it was denied. And we expressed that, that there was a, a very decent chance that it could be denied. But the, the petitioner decided to take that risk and, and asked to be brought before the council.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, call a roll on the decision to send this back to council, or to, to the Transportation Committee.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, well, let's go to the Transportation Committee, and they can kind of hash it out then, and then we'll come back to City Council when they've come up with options and recommend you, you or another representative-
So the city will be submitting to IDOT this request, or is it?
No, no, no. So this, your request to, to not have sidewalks is being sent to the Transportation Committee. And then my guess is, is they're going to work out a deal for some kind of bonding that's based on the conversation.
Okay, so I'm guessing I'll, I'll be working with Donovan to work out those terms?
Yes, right. So, and that, that meeting will probably be scheduled later in this meeting, but likely it'll be sometime here in mid-April.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Mayor, if I can just, this is more for the general public. It's not that the sidewalks are being, that this council's saying no to the sidewalks. It's just that no to the construction of sidewalks right now. If I could.
Yep, correct. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, uh, to item number 11, is a Class A liquor license application, um, I'm sorry, item 10. Item 10 is relinquish, relinquish Class A liquor license. Ward Green has submitted a letter relinquishing Class A liquor license from Red Jellyfish Inc., doing business as Bunk's Place, 703 East Diggins Street, upon approval of a license issued to Jeff and Dan Ruckausky. Doing business as R and R Ale House LLC. Your action is requested to approve the request. Please note for the record that Alderman Schultz has left, or recused himself from the meeting. And I believe the petitioners are present, yeah. If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Jeff Ruckausky, 2511 Juicen Farm Lane, Ringwood, Illinois.
And I'm, I'm Todd Ruckausky, not Dan, so for the record, it's Todd, T-O-D-D.
Oh, that's right, okay.
And I'm at 10813 North Woodstock Street in Huntley.
Okay, thank you. So, the first request here, item 10, is to relinquish, um, existing Class A liquor license. The business has been sold to the Ruckauskys, and they're looking to open a new business in that same location.
Make a motion to approve Ward Green's, um, request to relinquish his Class A liquor license for Red Jellyfish Inc.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Hatterline, second by Carncross. Comments or questions here? Hearing none, clerk call a roll.
Alderman Perkins?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Lavelle?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Okay, item number 11, which is the second part of this, is a Class A liquor license application. Jeff and Todd Ruckausky, uh, doing business as R and R Ale House LLC, 703 West Diggins Street, have submitted an application for a Class A liquor license and video gaming license. Your action is requested to approve or deny the application pending background checks, mission of fees and insurance to be effective May 1st, 2024. And I, uh, the DC had given me, um, a full report, and I think we're still waiting on fingerprints for one of the gentlemen, uh, but so far everything appears to be fine. We just, uh, wait on the issue until that has been completed.
Motion to approve, you know, pending the rest of the background check and everything coming back good, so.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Ha- or Carncross, second by Hatterline, uh, to approve the, uh, application for the liquor license pending fees, background check, insurance. Any comments or questions?
Uh, what kind of business are you guys providing in there? Is it just like a bar or a restaurant type?
Yeah, we want to do like a sports bar, um, make a, uh, location that people want to come to, okay? And we're gonna have food, obviously. It'll be bar food, but it's gonna be very, very good bar food. It's not, you know.
It's a pub type a little bit, kind of?
Correct, correct, yep.
All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk call a roll.
Alderwoman Hatterline?
Yes.
Lavelle?
Yep.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. We'll have all that for you. Clerk will have that tomorrow, should, all right?
Appreciate it.
Very good, thanks. Uh, let the record reflect that Alderman Schultz has returned to the meeting. Item number 12 is a Transportation Committee recommendation for the 2425 Motor Fuel Tax Road Program. Your action is requested to approve the committee's recommendation to accept the locations as presented for the 2425 MFT Road Program, noting that this, um, uh, these recommendations are for rejuvenation and crack filling only, and did not include stopgap.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion by, uh, Schultz and second by, uh, Lavelle. Comments or questions here?
So, does that mean there will be no stopgap?
No, what's left?
This year?
The stopgap hasn't been determined yet.
Yeah, there, there will be a stopgap. We have about 3,000 square yards of, uh, skip patching that we can complete. We just have to identify the areas. This year, uh, as discussed in the Transportation Committee meeting, uh, we hope to spread the joy. Um, so, more, more critical areas throughout the city that, that might not have been addressed the first time, um, just because of the proximity of all the patches in that area.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk call a roll.
Alderwoman Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavelle?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
All right, thank you. Item number 13 is the Administration Committee's recommendation for FOP equipment donation. Your action is requested to approve the committee's recommendation to accept the FOP's donation of a Mavic 3 drone to the City of Harvard. Be utilized by the Harvard Police Department and other departments as necessary.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Perkins, second by Hatterline. Any comments or questions here?
I just wanted to add that, um, the total cost of this drone is $7,202. The, uh, FOP, or Fraternal Order of Police, um, went out and did, uh, fundraising in order to cover this cost.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Uh, I think, you know, going forward, um, uh, we need to be clear with like Park Foundation, FOP, anyone doing fundraisers for specific, specific things, um, needs to be clear to the people that are asked to make the donations, that this doesn't just go to that department. It goes to the city, it can be used by the entire city, because people might have made donations thinking, well, this is for the police department, and it's not just for the police department. I understand why, I'm just saying we need to make sure that that's clear.
And, uh, to address your concern, that was very clear in emails to the then-president of the FOP, that, um, any equipment is being donated to the city, even though it might be more directed to a, a department, it's, it's city equipment. If, say, Parks or Economic Development or, uh, Public Works needed to borrow the, the drone, it's not being used for an investigation at the time that they could.
Yeah, understood. I'm just saying, these would be, I think, these would be made clear to the general public that's making donations for that item.
I can write a policy up on that.
And so, what's the, what's the cost and, um, logistics of training to use the drone, since it's a very expensive piece of equipment?
Right, it requires an FAA drone license, which I believe runs about $500 to $600 and, and eight to 16 hours of training. Um, that, uh, is a significant cost. Um, but that's if they fly it over 300 feet, I believe. If they fly it below 300 feet, it's, it's essentially basic training.
But somebody, whoever's doing the flying, needs to have that training.
Yeah, and, and.
To be able to use it.
That is correct, and, and one of the things that.
What's that?
Doesn't crash in a tree and be broken.
True.
Or a power line, or a house, or.
And if you, um, look at the invoice, you'll notice that it was dated, uh, May 25 of 2023. These were issues, this, why it's taken so long to come here is, is one to address that, uh, and understanding that, uh, you need to ask permission to, to donate, um, uh, equipment like that, um, as well as, um, uh, training like this needs to be addressed. Parameters, uh, the, uh, equipment needs to be donated to the city and not to a, a particular department. That, that's part of the reason why, um, and there was a little miscommunication, um, with previous, uh, personnel, um, and, and that's why it took so long to get to this point. So, yes, um, as far as training, uh, that's already been kind of discussed. Um, because it is a professional-type license, um, one of the aspects to it is any person, or any personnel who goes through that training would be required to be here and essentially guarantee that they're gonna work for the city for X number of years more to essentially work that off. Um, and if they leave sooner than that, uh, that they'll have to pay the, the difference of that, uh, back. And that's because it more, again, it's, and it's, it's an exotic, uh, type of, uh, professional license.
Right, I understand, yeah. Just want to make sure that, that it's not like just anybody on city staff is gonna be able to go check it out and let's, let's, let's just get some photos with the drone.
Sorry, Ann.
Yeah, so, so with the logo, you know, have a little drone instead of a plane. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk call a roll.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Lavelle?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 15 is the Administration Committee recommendation for backyard chickens. Your action is requested to approve the committee's recommendation to adopt the proposed ordinance regarding backyard chickens.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Hatterline, second by Lancaster. Any comments or questions here?
I'd just like to, to just make a, a comment, I guess, about the, um, recommendation and the ordinance language that's recommended is, I feel like the committee, and I want to thank Charlie Gorman in particular, but I, the whole committee really did a good job of going through all of the issues, um, that were brought up by the community, pro and against, and, um, I think, I feel like this is, if we're going to have backyard chickens in Harvard, I think we've got a good system worked out, and it's a two-year trial. Um, we're very clear about that, and that is, I think, consistent with what the, um, zoning board was wanting to do, um, is to have a trial period, so, um, I feel, I feel like we've, we've gotten this to a good place.
I'd like to say that, uh, thank you to Donovan and the city staff for drafting up this, this ordinance the way it is. We spent a lot of time on this, and it took a lot of resources and energy from everybody, a lot of heated discussion, uh, from both sides, and I have to say that, looking through this, this is, uh, this is an excellent ordinance. It's very detailed, there's a lot to it, but I feel like out of the ordinances that we've drafted from scratch since we've been here, I think this is one of the, the first ones really, and it, this is really excellent work. I mean, this is, this is fantastic work, so, thank you.
Thank you for that, and certainly thanks to Alderman Gorman, who put a lot of work into it also. Um, but I did want to say, in speaking with our legal counsel today, this will be subject to final attorney approval. There's maybe some tweaks that aren't gonna change the substance of it or anything, but just to clean it up a little bit, so, that's all I wanted to add there.
Understandable. Huh, yes, you'll need to amend your motion pending approval by legal counsel.
Okay, I amended my motion to include that it.
Pending approval by legal counsel.
Pending approval by legal counsel. Thank you.
Uh, I, I did want to bring up, if I, I may, I wouldn't normally do this. Second.
Second.
Uh, Laurie.
Laurie, sorry.
Thank you, Laurie.
I'll, I'll second it. Thank you. Pending approval.
Uh, under item number 11, or line 11, under minimum requirements, um, noted that this is for only owner-occupied properties. So, I'm, I wanted to make sure that that was clear for when you're voting on this, that that was the requirement that you put in there.
Certainly. There was concerns that, uh, a tenant would only be there for a year, could leave the coop and things behind. We did include in here a variance process before City Council. That would be one of those items that someone could seek a variance, um, to come before council if they are a tenant.
Yeah, and it's, it's a two-year trial.
Understood, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
No, I saw that, and actually, I, it was, I mean, I, I think that that's a good thing to go with just because of the fact that, that, that there's at least some fail-safe in there for renters. I mean, we have a variance process, but I mean, sometimes there's long-term renters that are in the property, so it doesn't disallow them entirely, but at least it'll help with some of the landlords in town of, having things on their property that they really don't want or have to deal with after the fact.
Uh, any other comments?
Just one quick one. I tried to get the answer earlier today, but I didn't see it unless I wanted to get, uh, verified before I make my vote, and, uh, just make sure I got the right one. A D of permitting section B, where it says the initial permit fee is 300 and annual inspection fee in the amount as set forth in chapter 20 of the City Code. We're in chapter 20, because I was trying to look for that up in chapter 20, the amount, and which table you look at.
It won't be in there yet until this is approved, and then it will be included, but it would be in, uh, section 3, the Harvard City Code, section 20.06, building permit fees be amended to add a permit fee of $300 for backyard chickens and annual inspection fee of $25. So, if, if approved, then that code section would be amended. Laurie would update the code on the website.
Do I want much money?
About $300 initial permit fee and $25 annual inspection.
Any other comments or questions? Any from the audience? Hearing none, clerk call a roll.
Alderman Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavelle?
No.
Motion is approved, six to one.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2024-108.
Thank you, clerk. Item number 17 is the Parks and Rec Board Recommendation, uh, sorry, we skipped 16. 16, Parks and Rec Board Recommendation Fee Waiver Request. Your action requests to approve the Park and Rec's, uh, Board Recommendation to approve Harvard Milk Day's request for a waiver of fees for Harvard Milk Day.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Schultz, second by Carncross. Comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk call a roll.
Alderwoman Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavelle?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 17 is the Park and Rec Board Recommendation for the South End Milky Way Park Master Plan, and actually, master plan is a bit of a misnomer, it's really the park plan, um, for, um, engineering. Action is requested to approve the Park and Rec Board's recommendation to adopt the proposed amendment of the 2015 Parks Master Plan regarding Milky Way Park.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Uh, um, motion by Lancaster, second by Gorman. Any comments or questions here?
Uh, quick, uh, question, because I tried to watch it yesterday, and there was no audio. So, I was just going off the, the minutes. I know Lisa brought up, uh, some good points, and from my understanding is, our focus isn't just shifting to Milky Way with this?
No, it, it's not, it's, for the purposes of the OSLAD grant, um, this amendment, uh, will help get us points, and, um, uh, that will hopefully lead to a, a successful grant. It's one of the areas that when, in reviewing or triaging our last two attempts, um, an area that we sorely lacked in points. It's, it's not to, um, get away from the other parks' plans, it's just to capitalize on, on the OSLAD grant opportunity.
Another thing on that, I saw in the minutes saying something about, well, we haven't been staying on test of the last master plan before I even came on the committee, but I think we've been, they were trying to, Parks Board has been trying to, I know one of the main ones was maintaining it, and I get with the costs and fees of a thing, that's the reason why we have, the Parks Board hasn't been able to do all the big things in the master plan, but they've been hitting the small things that we definitely told the committee we would do if that referendum did pass.
All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk call a roll.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Hatterline?
No.
But they've been hitting the small things that we definitely told the committee we would do if that referendum did pass.
All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk call a roll.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Hatterline?
No.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovelace?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Motion is approved, six to one.
Thank you. I am number 18. Is the Park and Rec Board Recommendation for OSLAD Grant Master Proposal. Your action is requested to approve the Park and Rec Board's Recommendation to Approve Christopher B. Burke's Proposal to Create a Master Park Plan for Milky Way Park and Assist the City in Completing the Necessary Steps Required Prior to Submitting an OSLAD grant application.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Carncross, second by Lancaster. Any other comments or questions here?
Yes, I have another one, sorry. It's because, like I said, I was trying to watch this last night and going off the minutes. Um, and it's down, uh, two more sections, uh, bullet points. But the money market, the money, money market from the parks is paying for this right now, correct?
That is correct.
But we are, the grant won't reimburse it. We're reimbursing by selling a vehicle that they just, we just approved to buy in 2022?
So, the, so the, um, the grant won't reimburse for design? Um, the grant is, is really for either acquisition or actual development of, um, said property?
So, my other question going off of that is, and I guess I should have brought to some more when we, it was talked about in admin, was it two admins ago? But, um, what will happen when we do hire a new parks superintendent, whatever you want to call them, and vehicles, are they still going to use one of the older vehicles?
Right now, the, the tentative plan is that they're going to use, um, the squad car that we use for the, um, in the admin fleet. Um, it's a retired, um, police cruiser.
Okay. Um, so anything that needs to be done in the parks, off-roam, public works will be dealing with that?
No. Um, if, if it's a situation where, um, a pickup is required, then, uh, we would borrow one from the, um, public works. Uh, keep in mind that we already have, uh, one that, uh, that's public works, but it's more parks that Daryl uses. And, oh yeah, thank you. We actually have two, uh, one that the part-timers use, uh, the seasonal help, and one that Daryl uses. So, there are other opportunity, or other pieces of equipment in the fleet to be able to, uh, handle a, a need of, of such a...
And Daryl's truck came from where again? Because I know we did that. I refresh my memory.
Yeah, there was a lot of talk of, uh, moving around. Daryl's truck is actually still the parks truck.
One that we might sell.
No, there were, there were actually three. There was a 2022, uh, 2007 Chevy, and it's two seven, uh, 2007 Ford, correct? Chevy. Okay.
Two 2020, two 2007 trucks, and then this newer one.
Correct.
So, why don't we get rid of the older one and keep the newest one? Because from what we've been trying to do...
Alderman, that's a, that's a separate, uh, action item that we'll come to. Um, so...
Okay.
Yeah, you're, you're, yeah, that's, that's another agenda item. We can discuss that when we get to that agenda item. Are there any other comments or questions concerning OSLAD?
Well, I'm just gonna, it's in the minutes, but just going to, um, point out that I just, I am not in favor of this. And it continues, you continue, the language in here continues to be that this is a master park plan for Milky Way Park. And, um, you don't do, um, master plan in three months. Um, that's just not what it is. It's...
I, I concur. Um, Lisa, I believe that's a mis-titled. It's not, it's not a master plan. It's a development plan for this park.
And it's, and it's really just aimed at, at trying to, trying to get the grant to do something that's not in our Parks Master Plan from 2015. So, we're just shoehorning something in there to fit a grant program. So, just, I don't think that's the way we should do our planning.
How much is this grant potentially for?
Woodstock got a grant for 2.2 million. Um, Marengo got a grant for 600,000. Um, a lot of the, what they got their, uh, grant dollars for is what, um, in the, in the past, uh, in our two previous, well, I'm sorry, one, um, previous attempt, um, back in 2022, no, 2022, um, very similar. Uh, it's, uh, actually laying out a, a plan, um, for soccer fields, a multi-use football field, uh, potentially other items like, say, a pickleball court. Um, and then it's also, um, laying out, uh, a connection point between the north end, northwest end of the, uh, what started out as a walking path, uh, over the railroad track is to bring that down along the south end. It's also, um, uh, planting, uh, trees in certain locations, because right now we have a small grove, uh, that's developing where a soccer field could go. So, we would, uh, uh, take down those trees and, and then just plant new trees in other parts of the park.
The chief board would be involved in that one?
Um, that's a later item, but...
Okay.
Yeah, hopefully those aren't trees that the land conservancy donated to the city working with Ryan a few years ago.
No, 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 those trees are, um, on the outer rim of the, of Milky Way Park. And let me, um, clarify, the 2022 OSLAD grant that we applied for, um, was to complete a requirement from an OSLAD grant that we got back in the early teens to get that 10 acres of land that is on the...
South side.
South side of the park, uh, which we were required to actually finish that land, and we never did. That was one of the requirements of the OSLAD grant, but we obviously don't have money to finish that. We got the grant, bought the land, and then never finished the land. So, I know Dave and, 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 um, Ryan worked on that grant. Uh, so, I, I see no issues with applying for another, another OSLAD grant, having someone professional do this. And this is a point I want to make later on, that I, I think we either need to consider hiring a, a grant writer, um, permanently at some point, uh, because the amount of money that we can get into our community, in my opinion, would be worth it. But that's for later discussions.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk call a roll.
Alderman Perkins?
Yes.
Hatterline?
No.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovelace?
Yep.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Motion is approved, six to one.
Thank you. I am number 19. Is the Park and Rec Board Recommendation for Programming Fee Structure. Your action is requested to approve the Park and Rec's Board's Recommendation to Increase Non-Resident Fees to 30% over Resident Fees for All Program. The current fee structure is 10% over resident fees.
Do we have any data on what the, I guess, what the ratio of non-resident to resident participation in any programming we've had so far? I'm just curious if that even exists.
I don't believe so.
I don't, I don't believe that's, that data has been collated to, to be able to get that.
I'm just curious, just so that we know of, like, just, we do this, like, what to what level of impact is it really going to have? It's like 10 people, 5 people, 300 people? I don't know.
Just based on more, um, conversation, um, I'd say out of, say, a group of 20 people, it'll affect maybe five, six?
Okay. I'm just trying to just, you know, gauge, like, what kind of impact it's really going to be. Like I said, if it's one in, one in a thousand, it's a...
Well, we did, um, make the point that we want to see data collected going forward, so that we do actually have data.
I, I agree. Just curious if we had any so far. Uh, there's a lot of cases where we don't have data so far, and we're just kind of building the, the groundwork for it. But, um, I don't, I don't see any reason why not to do it.
What's your pleasure?
A motion to approve, I guess.
Second.
All right, motion by Carncross, second by Schultz. Any other comments or questions here? Hearing none, clerk call a roll.
Alderwoman Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovelace?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. I am number 20. Is the Park and Rec Board Recommendation for Surplus Property. Your action is requested to approve the Park and Rec Board's Recommendation to Declare the 2022 Ford Pickup Truck, uh, F-150 as surplus with a minimum bid of $30,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Schultz, second by Carncross. Comments or questions?
It was seconded by Lovelace.
Oh, Lovelace, I'm sorry.
That's fine. I don't care.
Matt, this would be the place to...
Matt, and just, Matt, just clarification on this vehicle. Um, this was purchased, the whole was originated during COVID. And remember, there was like limited vehicles available? This was like the only vehicle we could get. We got a four-wheel drive. You remember all that? So, I don't know if it fits our needs now, but it, but it was a vehicle we could get. And Ryan's expressed the need for it, so we moved forward with it. Just, that's giving the factual.
Yeah, but we, and we paid less than this for it, didn't we?
Yeah, correct.
You bought it on a government contract.
That's why.
So, we can make money by doing it. Yes. The blue book value is worth more than you paid. What are we arguing about?
And just, uh, for the record, the blue book value is about 36, 38,000, give or take. Well, they, they prevent that. They prevent that.
Because then we're going to be a profit government.
I, I think this was, I think this is a one-time deal when we had that, that used new car inversion where, yeah.
Let's, let's not order our dealer plates yet.
Yeah. Um, just out of curiosity to go with, again, just for people's interest, um, there's good reason to sell this vehicle. Did we look through all the other vehicles and potentially just make sure that within the, in the departments that this vehicle would not be a better fit and to get rid of another vehicle in its place?
The focus of the Parks and Rec Board was to get rid of this particular vehicle.
Okay.
So, I know people are wondering, because we can make money off of it. So, going back to it, so there's no other usage for public works for this truck?
Not for this particular vehicle. It, it doesn't fit the parameters of what we need, other than for, uh, department heads to drive around. And that's, that's a lot of money for, just to drive around.
A foreman won't need it sometime if we ever create that position?
We're, we're probably two years out before, um, at the earliest, uh, for that to happen.
Was this truck four-wheel drive or two-wheel drive?
Four.
It was four, okay.
That's all we could get.
Yeah.
But four-wheel drive is still nice to have.
I, I would argue that it, it's the only one you want, but...
Yeah, it is. Um, I just hope in the next, as long as I'm on here, I hope not to see in, uh, budget workshop, uh, another pickup truck like this in here then, next couple of years.
To my knowledge, we've never purchased a four-wheel pickup truck, except for this one.
Even a two-wheel drive one, I don't, there'd be no...
Right.
I still would not like to see even a two-wheel drive pickup in here now. At least, I got one more year in the term if I, if I don't go again. So...
I have to concur, at least on the principle, that if we sell the vehicle and next year we get to the, and the department's asking for another vehicle...
And it's going to be 45,000.
I, I, I will have to, uh, call raspberries on that one for you, okay? Just so you're aware.
Uh, just keep in mind that this, this particular vehicle, there's been some, uh, arguments going both ways, whether or not this, this, um, this vehicle was purchased with capital improvement funds that were designated for the parks. So, releasing this vehicle, selling it back, the funds are going back into the, the money market fund, which is their capital improvement fund. And then it also, um, offsets the cost of doing the, the design plan, so that, that, uh, fund is not drawn down any further. So, that's why this, this has been kind of a sticking point and, and, uh, something that, uh, Alderman, uh, Schultz, uh, mentioned before, is making it very clear that vehicles, they may have been purchased in one department, but they're actually for the city and to be reallocated as needed. Um, after all, the, the vehicle I drive, uh, the vehicle that Ann drives, are, both came from the police department. So, this is just, it, part of what we're doing here too, and that's why I can't guarantee down the road, we're not going to ask for another vehicle. It just, this just kind of cleans up, um, a, a bad situation, and we can move forward.
I will say I do appreciate the consideration for that funding, uh, for the Parks Board. I know that in the past, there's been, uh, quite a bit of back and forth over the, the treating the parks as like, like a separate entity that, you know, the rob Peter to pay Paul back and forth. So, um, I, I appreciate that, that, that that's respected, um, that their funds, their fun, you know, et cetera. So, um...
All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk call a roll.
Alderwoman Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovelace?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
No.
Motion is approved, six to one.
All right. Uh, I am number 21. Is the Tree Board Appointments. Your action is requested to approve the Mayor's Recommendation to Appoint the Filing Individuals to the Harvard Tree Board. Sean Kingsett, Shannon Westfall, Janet Hug, and Joel Crete. And Alderman Hatterline will be the chairperson for this new committee.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion by Perkins, second by Schultz. Any other comments or questions here?
I'd like to congratulate Lisa for being able to get this board up and running, the amount of time that it took, and, uh, all of the hard work in finding, uh, the applicants to be appointed. So, congratulations on your new venture. Uh, and, uh, look forward to seeing a lot of good things out of it.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, clerk call a roll.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Lovelace?
Yes.
Carncross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. I am number 22. Is to call special, um, Parks and Recreation Board Meeting on April 4th for Candidate Interviews for the Parks and Super, Parks and Recreation Superintendent.
Do you have a time on that?
Six o'clock.
How many interviews?
Um, we're down to two final candidates.
So, we're free on the third? That...
Yeah, there was, uh...
April 3rd is not, don't have to hold that anymore.
Correct.
Okay.
April 4th at 6:00 PM. Okay.
Make that motion.
No, I don't think any motion. There's a call meeting.
Oh, okay.
So, so the, hold on. So, the final, um, whoever's selected will not be able to start till approved by city council, correct?
That's correct.
Correct. That would be the end of April, correct?
Correct.
Are we okay with that? With what is, considering the fact that the pool's about the, will be opening up in about four to five weeks after that?
We've already got the pool underway, and, um, I'm already started to, to talk about supplies for the pool. So, yes, we're, we feel confident. And Jason, with the, the, uh, pool manager, uh, and I are starting to work on, uh, staffing.
Okay, wonderful.
So, yeah, we feel pretty confident.
Okay, good. I did, I was just concerned. I, I thought the, the process wouldn't take this long. I thought we'd have a new, we, we would be selecting a person today, or we'd be approving the person today. And I'm worried another month, because I know what's involved with running a pool. I worked at a pool when I was growing up, and so I, I know what it takes. So, I'm, and I know you've managed pool too. So, okay. All right, we're good. Leave it with you. Thank you.
Okay, Department Head Reports. We're down a couple of Department Heads today, but, uh, Donovan?
Mayor, City Council, I want to start off by congratulating Ann Nutley, who celebrated 10 years with the City of Harvard, uh, a week ago. We celebrated that by getting into Community Core, our new permitting software, and starting to entering permits and getting the lay of the land. There's some kinks in there that we're working out with Community Core, some things, uh, features that we need, um, to be tightened up. But we're doing our best to get all the permits from January 1st entered in, so we could provide a full first official report out of Community Core and, at the April meeting. So, we look forward to that. I've been asked to join and accepted the Naturally McHenry County Board of Directors. First meeting I'll attend there is, uh, April 4th. I obtained a certificate in Workforce Development Fundamentals from IEDC after taking an eight-week course. That goes towards me becoming a certified economic developer. That test has a 50% passing rate, so I'm looking forward to that test exam. With my track record of passing exams, I think it'll be an easy one. The church at 309 North Division Street is being converted into three rental apartments. Uh, that permit is finally ready for pickup after several rounds of reviews. The school addition, uh, the engineering plans for Jefferson School are just about wrapped up. And then that goes to the state for, uh, plan review. The city does not have a hand in the plan review for the building. Funny, that came up today. Alderman Perkins noticed on a career hiring site, uh, that Panera Bread's looking for a manager for, uh, in Harvard. So, I didn't know we had a Panera Bread. I've been here almost a year, but, um, so that was interesting to see. Badger Fulfillment Group is hosting Cars and Coffee on the 30th at 9:00 AM, our local coffee shop. It'll be their first event. They've also signed up to be a coffee vendor at the soccer tournament on July 27th and 28th. So, we're excited to, uh, get them into the mix, and they're excited as well. The next planning zoning commission meeting on April 2nd, Greenway Properties, it'll be seeking a variance on several of the lots in Turtle Crossing, uh, something that came up at the last minute. Some of the lots, he's able to move the lines to make the homes fit, uh, which can be done administratively, doesn't require a variance. However, on several of the lots, he needs a 69-foot wide lot. I believe he has 67 feet. Something that came up at the last minute. Some of the lots, he's able to move the lines to make the homes fit, uh, which can be done administratively, doesn't require a variance, however, on several of the lots, he needs a sixty-nine-foot wide lot. I believe he has sixty-seven feet, sixty-six or sixty-seven feet, so he needs a foot and a half on each side. And then at the next C.D., uh, Community Development Committee, meeting, we're going to be discussing business registration, updated building codes finally, uh, TIP proposal from TESCA for the old city hall and police station, as well as some other areas around there, and then revolving loan guidelines. That's all I have, mayor.
All right, thank you. Rob?
Uh, report is submitted. Other than that, uh, mentioning, or worth mentioning, the, uh, the Dakota that was previously occupied a corner of the city hall lot went to auction. I don't know if anybody paid attention to that, but, uh, we got eighty-five hundred dollars for it, and it's going to Peoria. He's coming here tomorrow to drive it back.
What were you asking?
Uh, it was, uh, out on auction. Uh, I think my initial estimates was about four thousand, um, but, uh, bidding, I, I think it was at thirty-three hundred. Sorry, Donovan, to talk about this in front of you. Uh, it was at thirty-three hundred at that afternoon, and we had a hundred and seventeen bids, and it sold for eighty-five hundred, which the city will collect about seventy-five fifty from after fees. So, uh, we will have more stuff posted on, on GOV deals coming up here. Uh, right now, we are just getting ready for the spring construction season. We've gotten rid of spoils. Uh, we will be marking for skip patching, and then after that, uh, sort of wrap up, uh, to projects going to next year, is we will be removing the tennis courts, uh, at Shadow Creek in the playground area, and then also removal of the library cut-through from the parking lot to the parks. So, those are on the shortlist.
All right, thank you, Rob. Uh, Jim's out this week on vacation, so his report is submitted.
So I was going to say, on behalf of Jim Grant, um, Debbie Bujot, and, or Bujot, sorry, and, um, and the interim, um, Parks and Rec Director, report's as submitted, mayor.
Ann?
Report is submitted, and I just wanted to let you know that the first nine years of me being here, we had about one house built new a year. Uh, in the last month, we've had ten new building permits for new houses, so Harvard's growing.
Great.
Thank you. D.C.?
Report is submitted. Um, couple of things going on. We just put on Melanie Bowden as parking enforcement. That's been on Facebook, um, pretty common knowledge at this point. Our candidate, Daniel Monreal, still going through the process and, as far as the background, uh, where the background is complete, excuse me, um, right now, he's on his second of three parts of testing. Um, we will know by the fifteenth how that all pans out, and hopefully after that point, we can make a decision on whether, you know, we're going to put him on or hire.
When's our next academy seat?
So he is a Chicago police officer currently.
Well, he is, because of lateral.
Yes. He's a five-year, uh, CPD officer, um, so he'll be coming over at, on a lateral basis, so there will be no academy for him if he pans out, so knock on wood, it's seven thousand dollars per academy, so I'm hoping, hopeful. Other than that, what I have going out, we had our detective interviews for our detective investigations vacancy. Uh, we had two candidates for that. Um, I believe that the chief will be speaking to them one-on-one in a second formal setting of an interview, and then we'll make our determination from there. Case is almost done. Um, thank you, Lou, for your participation.
Very memorable.
Very memorable. Um, other than that, that's nothing else I have, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, committee reports. Dan?
Uh, we need to schedule the, uh, community development meeting for April. Jay, do you have anything going on in April that's going to be prohibitive?
No, just throw it out.
Let's see, the ninth?
Both my sons are going to Germany, uh, that day. They fly, they fly out that day, so I'm not sure what time that is.
Okay.
Can we do it the tenth instead?
I have no problem with the tenth.
Tenth, okay.
Lori, do you have anything?
I'm good.
Oh, you're going with the tenth? Okay, we, we figure it's six-thirty.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we can go to the airport and say goodbye to them, and I'm not sure what time they're flying out, so.
No. No.
I think it's actually an evening flight, so, yeah. It's pretty cold.
That'll be fun. That'll be exciting.
What time?
Uh, figure six-thirty, that's our standard time.
Okay. Thank you.
I would say, uh, Lori, if you let, uh, Luna, Rosa Luna know, and if she can't make it, let me know, and we'll see if there's an alternative, just so we can include her if, if she'd like to be there. Other than that, I would just like to, again, uh, thank the city staff on the work that they put in on the chicken ordinance, and I appreciate everybody's time and energy that we put into that. I know that we were trying to find a good balance that was a, a compromise between the, the fours and against, and I, I do feel like we found a very, very good, uh, middle ground that made a lot of people happy for both, got everybody at least something that they wanted, so, um, I think that was a testament to, uh, this body's ability to, to handle, uh, a difficult subject and, uh, come up with something that we can be proud of as, as a, as a work. Uh, so, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, John?
Um, just, uh, real quick, I was at the, uh, libraries, uh, meeting last Thursday, um, and I just wanted to tell Rob, they're, they're planning on getting their parking lot done mid-August, so if you could get doors done before then, um, we don't know what kind of barricades or curb or whatever you want to fill in. Five feet of curb. Okay, all right. Um, other than that.
That's it, okay. Jay?
Uh, February two thousand nine, I left Motorola, and when I left Motorola, I told my wife, I think I should get involved in the city. I talked to, uh, the fort, the mayor at the time, uh, Jay Nolan, Jay Nolan, and, uh, was part of the events committee. That fall, we started movie night, and I've been running it for fifteen years, and April will be my last one I'm doing, passing it off to someone else, but I want to thank Lori Moller has been my trusted assistant behind the scenes, printing out flyers and, and, uh, posters and everything since that time, and handling the licensing fees and everything, so, uh, the, all fifteen years, she's been there to help me, so thank you very much, Lori, I appreciate it. I have a resident, yeah. I have a resident who contacted me. I don't want to give his name, but I told him I would bring this up in the meeting. Uh, he has lived in Harvard for, I, you know, I don't even know if he's, I think he's from Harvard. Uh, he built a, a business out on, um, Division, I think it's a division, uh, oh, no, Diggins, I'm sorry, Diggins, uh, just passed the container company, did that in nineteen eighty-three. In nineteen eighty-eight, the city made it illegal to burn leaves in the city, um, and since that time, uh, MDC or whoever it was has picked up leaves from his property. They won't do it anymore. Our contract says they don't have to do it. Um, but for some reason, they were doing it. They did it all the way up until the fall of this past year. So, um, I spoke to Dave Nelson, and Dave Nelson said that he doesn't believe that our previous contract said that they had to do it, so I don't know why they're doing it, but he's rather upset that they're not doing it. So, um, I don't know what, uh, remediation we have for him or how we can help them, but I kind of want to pass this on to Lou. Lou, I'll give you, uh, his information, if you could at least talk to him. Um, I don't know what he can do. I mean, he, he print, I mean, this is, you know, someone who's lived in Harvard for, for years, run a business in Harvard for years, and, um, you know, planted trees, all of his property for beautification, and, uh, was always bringing them to the curb, and they would get picked up, and they're not getting done anymore. They, the, uh, our, our, whoever it is doesn't want to do that now, so. And they don't have to buy our contract. Looking at our contract, it says it's only, you know, personal, it's only for a personal property, not for a business, and I understand that, but it's just very strange that they were doing it all the way up until April of, or I'm sorry, August of last year. They actually did the first pickup for him, but not the second, and that's when he started talking to them, and, um, not quite sure what happened or why, but Lou, I'll pass everything on to you, and I know you've talked to him already once, but I, I, you know, I don't know if there's something that, I don't, I don't know what we can do for him. There might not be anything we can do for them. I mean, as a business owner, I don't expect that to happen for me. I would, you know, pay someone to do my landscaping and take care of that for me. We have some of those, you know, but I'm sure that maybe he, maybe he takes care of his property, and that's understood. Uh, other than that, um, again, thank you to Lori. Um, I can't believe fifteen years have gone by that fast, but it's been a wild ride. We, the movie was always at Jefferson. I think they're going to move it to, uh, I mean, I did in the last two at the library because of licensing issues, uh, and I think it'll work out fine, and, and there, someone else at the radio station's going to take over for me, so fifteen years is enough. I've, I've, I have, I'm time to wipe the slate, so, thank you.
Thank you. Lisa?
Um, so we need to set an admin committee date, which normally would be on the tenth, but that's the community development meeting.
I'm sorry.
Man shift at the always the tenth.
So, um, we could do Thursday, the eleventh, Wednesday, seventeenth. What works for you, Matt?
I'm okay with the eleventh, knocking out the two, for my meetings, the two days in a row. I mean, that works for me. I know, Matt, your schedule is the one that's more contentious for that.
Yeah. I would say the seventeenth would be better.
Does that work for you, Dan? Charlie?
I'll make it work.
That's fine.
And then is, since I'm new, I'm not into the routine, is the park board meeting always the third Monday? So it'll be the fifteenth at seven? At six? At six. Okay, six, okay.
What time is the admin meeting?
Six-thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Six-thirty on the seventeenth.
This one would be good in my calendar.
Thank you, that's it.
Okay, thanks. Uh, no Rosa Di, Matt, have anything for the council?
Uh, listen, I must have missed the, anything with, uh, gaming fees?
We wanted to make sure that it was drafted.
First before.
Correct, and we didn't have enough time between the, the chicken ordinance and everything else.
Okay, I was just making sure I didn't miss it in here, or was it?
Yeah, it wasn't, and, and.
Or the consent agenda, and then I just.
It didn't, it was not on this agenda, but that data was what you asked for, so.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep. It, it'll be on next city council's agenda.
I did have a correction for that, by the way. I think Woodstock's is five hundred. When I looked, when I went to their city website, it's, I, it said five hundred dollars, so.
This was, uh, what we had collected up until, um, today.
Okay, maybe I looked in the wrong place, but, yeah.
No prob, well, I can verify.
It doesn't really matter. I mean, you know, there's no way they're charging a hundred dollars going forward, so.
So I can verify, uh, what, these numbers, as well as try to get a few more.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Charlie? I guess we need to, um, set a transportation meeting date.
We did in the last meeting.
We did?
Yep.
Well, that's not going to give, um, you want to postpone that though and move it, because, uh, if we're going to be discussing this bond? You know, for the. Cause I don't think they can.
Yeah, that'd be a pretty quick turnaround.
Yeah. How about the week of the twenty-second? Anything in there?
City council?
Oh, yeah, we don't want to do that. Okay, how about, um, eighteenth? That work?
Got a problem? Uh, for me, but you may not need. Okay.
Are you, Charlie, are you looking to have the, whatever recommendation from the committee to the April city council meeting? I just want to make sure that if that's the intent, that we have enough time between the committee meeting and staff to have it on the agenda in time.
Can we do the ninth?
I can't do the ninth. Yeah, I can do the eleventh.
You can, you say?
Yeah, I can. Leagues are done finally, at that point.
Lisa? Oh, you're not on it anymore?
No.
John? You, you're still okay with you?
I probably won't be there. I'll probably take my, uh, daughter to practice for softball.
Any other suggestions?
Eighth, eighth or the fifteenth, or?
The fifteenth is, uh, correct.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, we want the sixteenth.
Sixteenth, yeah.
Monday, the eighth? Yeah, it's okay with me.
Yeah, I can make that work, it's fine.
Yep. We can all talk about the eclipse.
I might be risking for that, but, yeah, it's supposed to go over there, yeah.
Sorry I brought that up. Um. So what, what, what's left?
What, what other agenda items do we need, Rob, for that? The, what, the, the agenda items, if it's just the bond discussion?
That's all, that's the only thing that I've got, yeah.
You don't need to be there for that, do you, Rob?
Why, why did we originally have a meeting on the third if?
I can't remember.
I thought there was other stuff too, that's why we did another one.
I can work with Rob as well to figure out, eh, eh, as far as.
Well, if you want, if we want to have a meeting on the third, we could discuss it. Maybe we wouldn't get it done, but, you know, maybe they wouldn't be able to.
Donovan, you able to be there for the third? You know, just looking for some advi, I mean, how do we shape this? I don't.
Let's leave it on the third then.
Yeah, let's do it on the third.
The plan I'm doing is working with our engineer to see some standard sets for holding a bond and.
Right.
Uh, his thoughts, you know, on, on how long IDOT might take and some configurations that may be possible, so I think we can pull that off.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, six-thirty, uh, April third, transportation.
Lot of back and forth, end up back where we started.
I don't have anything.
Here we go, round again.
Okay, uh, Lori, do you have anything tonight?
I'm just happy we finally found a solution to the chicken.
Indeed, all right. Um, treasurer's report's already been as submitted. Attorney's report.
No report.
No report. Administrator's report.
So the only thing I wanted to add, um, and I've talked about it in, in various committees, is that our, our focus, um, as we move forward, as, as far as with staff and, and planning, is more data collection, um, and, and a lot less of, well, I think this is what happened. So, I, I hope I, I answered, uh, some concerns on that, and so that the, the council's aware. That is our focus, um, as well as, um, eh, you've heard, as far as training, we've got, uh, staff members that are progressing, um, through their training, and, uh, we're already starting to reap some of the benefits of that, um, and that's where it's a, it's a good thing, and, and I thank the council for, um, last year when we did the budget, um, making sure that we had funds, um, in the training budget, and then, uh, in this current, uh, budget year, uh, sorry, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five budget year, to make sure that we have training, uh, funds in there to continue to grow our staff. Again, it, it just, uh, reaps benefits for the city as well. Um, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Clerk's report.
I just have upcoming meeting dates, mayor. Tuesday, April second, we have the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at seven P.M. Wednesday, the third, Transportation Committee at six-thirty. Thursday, the fourth, there's a Special Parks and Recreation Committee meeting at six. Wednesday, April tenth, is Community Development at six-thirty. Park Board is Monday, April fifteenth at six P.M. Administration Committee meeting is Wednesday, the seventeenth, at six-thirty P.M. Our next regular and year-end city council meetings will be on April twenty-third at seven. That is all I have tonight, mayor.
All right, thank you. For the mayor's report tonight, um, I, I did want to touch on comment you made earlier about, uh, grant writing. Um, the city, uh, especially for roads, right, you know, we have the most grants in process than we've ever had, and, as been indicated by our engineer, like they've never seen us have so many grants. I do agree that it would be in the city's best interest to hire a grant writer, but we did not budget for that this year, but I, you know, had conversations with Lou that I, I have a huge desire for us to, uh, have a grant writer on staff. Um, we are trying to explore maybe opportunities to share grant writing with other communities. Problem with that, though, is, um, if you're competing for the same grant, that's not always such a good thing, so, uh, I think we're going to have a proposal for. So I think we're going to have a proposal for council next fiscal year on how we might be able to obtain a grant writer that is part of our staff, because I think if we had someone, we would have a better chance of obtaining the grants we apply for with someone who is well-versed on how to apply for grants and ensure that they're written in such a way that it makes us as most competitive as possible. In the end, competitive, compliant, and all the things that are required for being awarded a grant. So my anticipation is next fiscal year, we'll have a proposal for city council on how to add someone to staff to do that. Did want to make mention that we went through several candidates for the Parks and Recreation Superintendent and have narrowed that down now to two. Looking forward for those two to go to Parks and Recreation Board next month to get their questioning in and then anticipate appointing that person at the April city council meeting for starting shortly thereafter. We have new staff on board for the Water Billing Clerk has started and she seems to be working out quite well. We have an anticipation of hiring a new front desk clerk later this summer. We've already did interviews for that and we've identified a person to fulfill that role, but we're not ready to bring them on because it's a bit early. So they are, they have consented to taking, accepting the position, but it won't start, I think, until June 3rd. So as far as staffing in the administration department, I think we're pretty set for the foreseeable future. That's all I have tonight.
Who's the Water Billing Clerk? What's her name?
Her name is Ruby Vega.
Okay.
And for some of the council members who aren't aware, there's a, despite my best pleading, someone is trying to retire in September, which leaves a hole in our administrative assistant position. And so the goal with, as a mayor indicated, we have Ruby that's in, we have another person that's lined up to start June 3rd, and Jeanette's current position. And then when that happens, Jeanette will spend a few days to help train them, but then we'll shift over and become the next administrative assistant and start training for that and then to be the deputy clerk. And then that's all pending the referendum that I asked earlier. If that passes, then maybe Jeanette will end up being our clerk. We'll just take the two positions, merge them into one.
All right, with that, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Carncross, second by Perkins. Clerk, call a roll.